I'd like to welcome everybody to the November fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three work session of the Kansas City, Kansas Board of Public Utilities. Have a roll call, please.
Roll call.
Mylan.
Here.
O'Malley Henry.
Here.
Bryant. Come back. Gonzalez.
Here.
Brenneman.
Here.
Haley.
Present.
And. Bryant.
Hi, here.
Do you have a quorum?
Thank you. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda for the work session, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion to approve the agenda for the work session has been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Mylan. O'Malley Henry.
Aye.
Bryant.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
Brenneman.
Aye.
Haley.
Aye.
That motion carries.
Thank you. Uh, do any board members have any updates from any meetings they've attended, UG or otherwise?
Um, Madam Chair, Madam O'Malley Henry, this is David. Uh, we attended or we had, um, the UG Economic Development and Finance Committee met Monday of this week. Uh, several items that were discussed included, um, a ceding of a section of property from the, uh, what is now held by the Speedway. A section there, um, a portion for some redevelopment. And, um, also the establishment of a committee, uh, to distribute assets from, um, yet to be identified sources, but including but not limited to Cerner's seven million. And the criterion will be ten different places that will be contributed to, that will distribute those monies. Um, that's been carried over for discussion by the EDNF, uh, Economic Development Finance Committee until the next meeting, which I believe is December the fourth, uh, for final action to be taken then. That's all I have.
Uh, thanks, David. On the, uh, piece of property, did you say by the Speedway?
Uh, yes, ma'am. And a lot of discussion that went around, there were a couple of members, um, me being one and another of the committee that did not approve. Uh, there's some discussion about was that property taken during the original, um, allocation for the Speedway by eminent domain? Um, it was represented by counsel there, uh, I believe Wendy Green, that were their eminent domain issues that those would have lapsed statute. Uh, but there were a couple of us who were concerned that basically the UG, uh, would be complicit in the taking of a tract uh, from a private UG taxpayer, uh, to give to the Speedway for its development. And now here after these years, that same tract of land could be sold for profit by the Speedway to some, um, some new owner for development.
Right. And to clarify two points, the, um, the settlement from Cerner for not building the, um, resort, those monies have already been allocated. Those would not go through the committee and extra land was intentionally, um, purchased or eminent domain was used at the time of the Speedway because when the, um, horse track and dog track had been built, no additional land was acquired and it was bought up by, um, speculators and they were not able to develop it because of the high property prices. So additional land was acquired for the purpose of eventually developing it, whether it be by the Speedway, by some of the initial businesses that went in, or the, it was land that the unified government had held on to.
And that is my recollection as well. Angela Lawson, that was our counsel who just gave that. She is, is correct. That there were additional lands other than that that was needed for the Speedway. For example, there were four hundred acres that were not a part of eminent domain wholly that are what we now call the legends for that development. The, the question that's still out there is, were those ancillary lands that were acquired to diminish speculation? I said, oh, you know, my property may be worth a lot more once they build, uh, the Speedway here, that those additional lands were not taken. Uh, or, you know, some base offer made to people who did not want to move under the guise of what was called economic blight at the time. That the UG would be able to make more money on property developed as the Speedway and of course, the amount of taxes that were being paid by that private landowner. And as to, uh, Ms. Lawson's other point, she is correct. I did miss, misspeak. The Cerner monies were, are not a part of this consideration for this new entity, um, the, the ten different places where the monies will go, uh, to provide for economic development. Um, however, there was some discussion of those monies, that seven million dollars also going to some of the same ten entities that this subsequent organization would be. And, you know, it's all gonna go to the same place or the same area, um, anyway.
Hi. But is that meeting available on recording, Senator Haley?
I'm not sure.
Yes, it should be.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Any other board member?
We did not have a meeting, uh, of the, uh, Public Works and Safety since our last meeting, so I have nothing to report on that.
Thank you. Bill, do you have any update?
Uh, nothing here. Well, I'll just wait till the next one. We've got two items hopefully we can get to, uh, for the work sessions. I'll just, it's passed now, Rose, and wait for the regular session.
Okay. That brings us to the board rules of procedure. I believe we were gonna try to have a brief discussion on this prior to it, uh, going to a resolution for the board approval this evening. Do we have any board members with any comments or questions about the, uh, board rules of procedure that y'all had received?
I have one, uh, it's a clerical thing on page ten, uh, where we should be subsection two instead of subsection five, so just somebody.
What page?
Page ten. It goes one, five, three, four. The motion, this is.
Page ten, five.
We made note of that, Tom.
It just.
Again, again, I heard there, I read those numbers.
Any other questions or comments from board members on that set of policies?
I have a question, one point three. Both meetings sessions. Bob Mylan. How come contractors are not included in the information? That should not be discussed openly, hopefully.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question.
How come contractors were not included in the one point three? In, or, uh, had been discussed publicly. Identified and talk about, uh, personnel action and so forth about contractors.
Hey, Bob, I think under that first, first line, no member of the board or employee of the BPU or any other person. I would take that to mean that takes anybody who's in a room is held to secrecy. I mean, that, that's what I get out of that is if you were there, you cannot talk about it.
But in fact, my question.
I think, is your question to go into executive session to discuss that matter? Because that, the only time we could go into executive session to discuss a contractor would be if we were discussing a trade secret or if we were discussing a, a lawsuit client or claim or potential lawsuit or claim. They don't have the same legal protections that an employee does, um, that we would be able to just go into executive session to discuss that. But if it were in those, if it fell into those instances, then yes, I would recommend to the board that they go into executive session for that discussion. But it is a different, a little bit of a different, they're, they're in a different legal bucket for executive sessions.
Still not including me. I'm saying there are too many contractors, especially minority contractors, unhappy, not having information because they all always seem to be the low bidder and not included. Because the grapevine tells them that the big boys always get the apple. The small boys not hurt for. You need to change the wording to make sure that contractors discussion should be eliminated very clearly. Not all of us. Could be some dogs and cats. In my opinion. He was absent in the previous year, in twenty-five years ago, nineteen ninety-eight. He's not some man, he's absolutely not, thank you Father, that's not the contract. They know we've got the contract. It's not more than one figure. I'm just sharing the truth, the old truth and nothing but the truth.
Let, let me ask, um, Bob Mylan, if you get, is there some language that you would prefer that we see insert or take out to address your concern or how that might, how that might read so that we can clarify it?
I'm not clear what you said.
Good. So I, I understand the, the concern that you're raising. So is there additional language or is there someplace to embrace these contractors or embrace these other?
Yes, 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 absolutely.
Place that you could see?
Some kind of.
How, how, that we could insert that, that language maybe to, to make all of us more comfortable with what you're saying?
And I, I guess, I guess, the general manager addressed that problem, well, I can't. He's talked it all the time, from minority contractors, uh, I will make sure I'm included, etc., this goes all in all. He wrote for the God, Mr. Jones, he goes back thirty-two years.
So, Bob, one thing that I do is, uh, get information, uh, we've got, I get reports on where we are with all minority contracting. And, uh, and I am asking purchasing and I, and I have asked other around utility. How can we get in a better position to be able to work with our local vendors, look what our, work with our minority vendors even more? Because I'm not satisfied with where the numbers are to say. Opportunity, that opportunity may only come with us working with the community more to show them how they can better position themselves to do work for BPU.
You're doing quite well.
Appreciate it. Thank you. You want to want to, I'm quite well. Thank you for, yeah. And I'll, we'll keep, I'll keep that conversation going. Uh, again, I mean, the information is there. Amount of our contracts that go to local minorities or, or smaller than what I would like to see. But get fixed that overnight. So I mean, but, you know, just continuing to show on that where I can and, uh, I think it's important. We continue to do that.
For prominent minority contractors, so my answer is more than anything else, one word.
But. So which, because these are the procedures for the board, which section were you referring to? So that just refers to the executive session of the board when we go into a closed section?
Yeah, well, he, he comments all of the truth about it, but I, I know that, uh, from experience. Contract discussion goes outside of what we can afford that way. Yeah. It goes beyond all session. Contract awards and so forth, or discuss outside of the realm of sports.
And so, and I don't think this is the section because this, because this wouldn't even, this shouldn't be to, an executive session shouldn't be to discuss an award at all for, to any contractor.
There should be some place, maybe, um, let me, let me go someplace else, Bob.
So, okay. So before we start the customer service, uh, special, customer service policy discussion, we'd already got into our purchasing policy. Okay. And I think we're adding language and we really didn't have any, we're approved purchasing policies. So now we, we, where I said that the board often have purchasing policies. We'll have some operating procedures that'll, that'll operate up underneath that. I think it's important for us to identify, uh, supplier diversity and other things and that the board approves something like that so that we're moving down the right path to get to where we need to get to. And that can be done at that type of policy level.
Okay, well, maybe, uh, this one, uh, but my point is, it's an issue.
Yeah, I know, I know.
And so I may be at the wrong place. I'm not saying too well, but I've been too sick to discuss the whole other thing.
Right.
Somewhere along the line. It's very concerned, we haven't really addressed properly for a number of years.
So let, let us address that in the purchasing policies.
That seems like where it belongs to me in purchasing. Um, yeah, I, I feel like it fits under purchasing a little bit more this, I, I get the feeling this is for executive session. That this one point three, that, that's what it says to me.
That's what I was thought of.
Yeah, but we never really discuss a contract other than an employee's contract in executive session. I understand your point, Bob, and it's well taken by me.
I'm sure I'm the only one.
No, you're not the only one. I just feel like it's not in.
It'll be aggressive.
The right place.
The purchasing policies that we, that we.
It was down the road, please.
Yeah.
So it's, Bob is down the road. Thank you very much. Let's move on.
Are there any other comments from the board or questions from the board?
Yep. Thank you, uh, Madam President. While, um, we're on one point three, this is David again. Um, I do want to renew, uh, I see what's highlighted here, um, participation during executive session, again, under one point three, which may be from time to time by a member remotely, um, or by web-based technology. Um, I continue to be concerned, um, that we do have web-based technology or telephone that should allow, uh, or can allow that member, uh, of the board who's not physically present to participate. There can be and will be some crucial opportunities during that time. I mean, from time to time, all of us are not physically present or all of us have not been physically present. And during that particular point in time, there, uh, is security enough, privacy enough in place with technology? I want to renew my assertion that, uh, most modern methods of holding executive sessions can be done securely without divulging, um, done by telephone or web-based technology. And, um, it's just a, a failure to get with the times. If, um, if this one member's asked that we don't incorporate that in our, um, in our policies as well.
Angie, you want to address that? Uh, you made some comment about it at the meeting.
So I know that the unified government has an ordinance that prohibits its members from going into executive session electronically. Because they feel that it's not that, that, that the systems aren't secure, but they can't see who else might be in the room. So they do prohibit, and I, and I believe other municipalities and municipal entities prohibit it, although I, you know, I don't know if all do, probably not.
So there would never be no contract conversation in executive session? No, never?
A, a contract discussion, it would only be if there were a trade secret, but we would not go into discuss awards. We wouldn't go into talk about contractors or contract awards unless it was, the BPU was the subject of a claim or lawsuit or potential, unless it was litigation based.
Point is.
But it wouldn't be, you wouldn't go into discuss awarding.
And that Tom says you come forward in executive session?
No.
It's still.
Unless it is revolving around litigation.
Well, if it's, it's either, either that, it's a possibility that that could come forward in both sessions.
But then, but then we wouldn't have the contractor in the room with us so that we would not mention them because they would not be in the room. They would be the opposing party.
Your point. And that means no board member should take the permission outside the board. That's all I'm trying to say.
Agreed.
That, that, that is absolutely true, Bob, and I understand your point.
Okay.
On anything, whether it's a contractor or anything that's said in executive session doesn't go outside this room. And that's why I, I'm very opposed to electronically being hooked up during an executive session because I don't know if Tom's riding with his friend in the car talking on the phone. I, you know, and this dawned on me when we did it one time and I heard somebody's dog barking during executive session and I'm like thinking, who else besides the puppy dog is in the room? I don't know that.
And, but.
Sorry.
It is further, the parts of the board, Bobby Shelby, to enforce this policy stringently. Amen.
Well, I, I look at it as the most, the highest number of executive sessions in a month would be two. And they wouldn't be held necessarily until after the general, uh, board meeting. So, I mean, it's, it's, it's a responsibility that we've committed to and I look at it as if, if I would be unable to be in person, then I would not be privy to what happened in that because no one else is gonna talk to me afterwards. Because it's supposed to be privileged information and, and treated as such. I mean, it's, it's ultimately somebody's life that you're dealing with. So it's just, I think that there's two executive sessions at most in a month. We can make it to those or else they, we're just not gonna be involved. So.
So, you know, I understand, this is David again, I understand, you know, where you're all coming from, but I, I, I just don't agree. There's six members of the board and six of us can't always be present when we're making these particular decisions. It's incumbent on each of us as individuals to protect and to ensure these policies that are in place. You're gonna enforce it, you got your dog in the room or you have somebody else in the car. You as a board member, we as board members, six people clearly understand that if we're in executive session, we're not to have any other, I mean, I, it's not like we're trying to get, you know, and, and the point is, if there's something that needs to be undertaken, we all are on the, the six of us are on the hook for that. And I wouldn't want there to be, uh, some decisions made because of an absence of being on Zoom only. And again, there are larger bodies I should share with you. This, this came up, I, I listened in, as I mentioned before. I don't know what the UG is doing. I don't know what the Unified Government Commission is doing. I don't know what decade they're operating in. Um, I'm talking about what is happening among, um, major sophisticated governmental entities and private entities when it comes to executive sessions, including but not limited to, um, very, um, confidential matters that are being taken up at, at the state of Kansas where the finance committee, uh, does, they're able to do that in part electronically. And they have more than six members, um, but they include those members, you know, even electronically, and there haven't been any issues. So, um, I know, I see which way this is going. At some point in time, I hope that we will look toward what is more mainstream in, um, in, you know, the implementation of this.
That's the case. I'll, I'll risk my case and make sure that. Make sure our conversations are confidential as it should be.
Mm-hmm.
Because personnel or contractors or dog get like, whatever it is, make sure that, really with the policy statement. Is further policy the board, the force of politics currently? That's all I've got to say. I gotta hit it.
All right, Ed, I have nothing more to add. I just, just thought I would put a footnote to my concern that we're not as, um, sweet toward, uh, toward real policy or current policy with other entities as we might be. We might urge the unified government, uh, the commission itself to look at it as well. Thank you, Madam, uh, Madam President.
Thank you, Senator Haley. Um. Do we have a consensus that we're ready to move forward tonight or do we need to review this a bit more?
I think we have a consensus to move forward.
This is Jeb. I don't, I don't see any real, uh, defined changes that need to be made besides the one numbering sequence that Tom brought up.
I'm ready. I'm, I'm ready.
You are?
Yep.
Okay. I know you noted you had some issues last time with one of the sections. Um, okay, well, we'll, um, we'll move forward for a vote on this to be, uh, passed as amended during this work session tonight.
And Rose, it, it is on tonight's regular session agenda for adoption, so the revolution number, we'll get to that when we get over into the regular session.
Right.
So, so, you know.
So how would that motion be made to incorporate the change that Tom brought up? Is that a?
We can get that corrected prior to the meeting so it can be substituted in.
Thank you.
So, Madam President, you ready to move on?
I am.
All right. Next, next on the agenda, it's our capital improvement plan update for the board. And this goes, uh, with our two thousand and twenty budget, uh, discussion. This will be the last meeting before we get into our budget retreat. And, uh, and if you read the emails that were sent out, I did ask the board for dates and, and we're scheduling, scheduling December the fourth, uh, we'll start somewhere around eight thirty in the morning. And, uh, we'll work towards completing that in one day. If possible, if we need to come back, then, uh, we'll certainly come back. But, uh, that's the schedule that, uh, that you've agreed to and, and we'll move forward, so.
When, when do we think that the budget books are gonna come out?
Laura.
We are trying to get them out by Tuesday of next week.
Okay, before Thanksgiving?
Yes.
Good. We'll be leaving town. Thank you.
All right. So I'll turn it over to Randy. Randy, if you want to take the lead on, uh, the discussion.
Thank you for sitting down. Uh, tonight we have staff here to, uh, present, um, at the preliminary capital, um, projects that will fold into the budget for two thousand and twenty-four. This is your, your chance to participate in this process and look at these projects and ask questions if you have any. The largest majority of these projects that you're gonna burn and go through tonight all came from our rate study. There was a rate study and they were also in our five-year plan from last year. Where they all rolled forward, who, that were in two thousand and twenty, when we were doing twenty-three's budget, they were in twenty-four's capital plans and all kind of rolled forward. Um, there's been probably some modifications from staff has made, um, but the largest majority of them came through that process. So, um, I'll put, Jeremy, so introduce the staff.
Yeah, thank you, Randy. Real quick, most of you all know Mike Flores, he is the director of TND, uh, Howard Service Center. Jeremy would normally be here, Darren is, uh, had a little procedure and he's out this week. So Mike is here and David. is here and David Wilson is here, Supervisor of, uh, Electric Engineering. They're going to go through the material and information for you. And when they get done, as you all know, Glenn Rendell departed us back in summer. Uh, we've been looking for his replacement, happy to report, um, that we have found someone. We've made that person an offer. They have accepted and they will be starting, uh, at the first of the year. So, uh, while Glenn's not here, Director from near man is here, Doug Vaughn, and he is going to go through the, uh, E trial information with you. And then, as you all know, Steve and Jaren are here as they normally would be. So, thank you.
Just real quick, uh, on the capital projects, one of the, the kind of things we stress to staff when they're looking at doing things is, is, you know, don't just redo capital, you know, is it going to help customer service in some way? Is it going to make your operations more efficient? Is it going to improve reliability to our customers? And is it going to, you know, reduce some of the operating costs that you may be, you know, so we may have some upfront capital costs and may reduce some of those operating costs. So like I mentioned, uh, the majority of this, this, the projects that we're going to go over tonight all rolled forward from our rate study and from last year's, um, capital plan. Next slide. Uh, first up will be electric operations. Mike first.
Thank you. Um, as we stated, most of our projects right now are to improve, um, our reliability and our system, infrastructure, system improvements throughout the city. Um, electric operations right now is probably tasked with more projects than we've ever had. Uh, and the reason I'm saying that, we're going all the way from the eastern border all the way to the western border. And as I'll, um, update some of these major projects and, um, you kind of can see in oversea that we don't have one area in the city that is not being redeveloped or um, needed to be upgraded for additional, um, customer projects or improvements. So annual and underground overhead, uh, that's just, um, for our customer replacements that we do every year. Uh, those numbers have stayed true probably for the last five or six years. Our distribution pole inspection program is a ten year program that we've had. Uh, we're at the fourth year of our program. We inspect five thousand poles roughly every single year. And, uh, we've been having about a ten to twelve percent failure rate. So that ends up being about five to six hundred poles every single year that we've identified that need to be upgraded in the system. Um, our Poperhead Overhead Feeders, uh, if David, if I need any additional information, we had an EDA grant to improve that reliability for our western area in, in for the probably the largest project is our American Royal Project and our Urban Outfitter, um, warehouse that was, uh, uh, built. Uh, Yards Two Project, this is probably something new that we don't talk about. This is our, um, uh, on the very east end, it's at the west bottoms. Uh, we've had no development in that area for the last twenty to thirty years. Yards Two is an addition from a Yards One project that started in Kansas City, Missouri. Now they have an apartment complex that they're starting in Kansas City, Kansas. And we need to build, uh, additional infrastructures to be able to supply from BPU power. Uh, if everybody has heard, sorry.
On that one right there. So, uh, is there significant other property over there that is possible to be served by this, this is, I'm assuming is that when we had that economic development and we talked about the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars it was going to cost us just to get utilities over there. I'm taking that that's what this seven thirty five is, the electric side.
Yep.
And I'm assuming somewhere, and I don't see it in here on the water side, we're also going to have an investment to get that utility over there.
Uh, yes.
And, and do we know roughly, is, that was going to be like two fifty or I can't?
Yeah, I don't remember that. Um, but yes, we have an investment and, and the reason why we, we could have turn that over to, um, over to the Missouri side to feed. But because of, uh, of the talk of taking out Central Avenue, it takes out our water main. So we decided this is a good time for us to come over and make across the Kansas Avenue Bridge another main. So we could have multiple mains going across the other side of the river.
So we're treating it as redundancy.
Yeah, and, okay, yes, redundancy and the other.
Is also going to be as a redundancy.
Already some electric customers over there that'd be support.
We're coming across from Kansas Avenue.
It's not great enough to support those folks and the new developments. So we're upgrading that, which can increase the reliability and resiliency of the commercial customers that are already there and then be able to feed.
Will these also feed the bridge?
Yes.
Okay.
So our feed, um, for our river crossing is going to be on the Rock Island Bridge. They are, uh, instructing, uh, conduit system so we can use that as our river crossing.
Okay.
And redundancy, as we talked about, one of the things that the yard and the west bottom project does, it gives a redundancy to our James Street. Um, we're very limited in area there, um, to be able to give them a redundant speed. Um, we did lose, like you said, the central street, so we lost that crossing over there on the Central Street Bridge.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So. And the other part you asked is, there is another section of land that probably will be developed.
For potential other customers for the BPU. Yeah, this, this isn't, this investment isn't just for this one project. Those additional lands, good.
So we're not spending seven hundred and thirty five thousand dollars for yards too. It's yard for that, that apartment complex, it's.
We just aimed at yards too.
Yeah, that, that's what, that's what the impetus was to get it going. But it's a redundancy. It makes me feel a little bit better about.
And as, as everybody probably see in the city, so Kansas River Levy rebuild project has been going ongoing. And, uh, we've allocated some major project funds to relocate some of the services to, uh, um, compensate for, for those. Um, we just identified, uh, the major costs that we're having with electric, um, transformers overhead and underground. Um, just a quick, um, oversight, pre-COVID, we were having about one point eight million dollars spend in transformers with raw materials, shipping delays, um, we're up to four points two for the same amount of transformers that we've had before. So.
Are, are a lot of the overhead east of I six thirty five?
Um, overhead, um,
Transformers.
I would say majority of our overhead is always east of six thirty.
But I mean, the ones we're replacing.
Uh, yeah, yeah, I would say, I would say so. They're the oldest infrastructure.
Which part of these are also new development?
Yeah, storms, storms, new development. I mean, it's, it's every.
Them as well.
It, it could be up to two years for, uh.
Yeah, the latest times we have are like eighty five, ninety weeks. Yeah, on the order, we're, we're processing an order now for twenty twenty five.
But those are cute.
Is there a mean average for the shelf life of a transformer? No way to tell. Was it based on load or?
I think amount of our system, every storm that's fifty, sixty, yeah, we'd be fifty, sixty, but thirty plus years. Well, yeah. Substation transform will be probably a little bit longer lifespan.
Unless a squirrel gets in there.
All right, next slide please. Um, our transmission, um, projects that we have, our, our transmission pole inspection replacements um, that we're doing and improvements, we are, um, concentrating more on our sixty nine KB. It's some older system we have. One of the, um, major projects that we have going on this year is our Victor West, um, to Quandero or Victor West substation. And it's a redesign of how those, uh, entry cables, the sixty nine cable get into our breakers. Um, substation, um, I do know, we're building a new Mill Street substation to accommodate for, I'm drawing a blank on the, uh, uh, advantage metal. Advantage metals down there. This is, this is, um, has been designed when we did, uh, the Rosedale to Armoredale rebuild of the sixty one line. Uh, we are doing, uh, material securing, um, possibly going out for RP with construction this year. Um, but we're probably going to do the, uh, build in twenty twenty five. So we'll have that complete by twenty twenty five. Speaker substation.
Is advanced metals going to melt steel?
I've not heard that one.
Yeah, so they're upgrading, they're upgrading their facility there. This gives us an opportunity to, um, get some things, uh, out of that sixty nine system I talked about. We're kind of really on an island with that where they all, we're not tied to the outside role on that system. So we partnered with them, Pat and David's group, new power service agreement and, and upgraded here helps us both.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, and then speaker substation, we acquired the land, um, a couple of years ago for this speaker substation. Uh, this year we're just doing the engineering for the substation. Uh, that substation is going to be probably, I think, I think it's twenty six or twenty seven built, so two or three years away. And then substation improvements are, are sixty nine KB, um, breaker change outs. Uh, next slide please. Um, just general construction that we have every year. Um, our work equipment and automobiles, um, are two largest um, buys that was this year are replacements of our larger buckets. Uh, they range from two hundred seventy five thousand to three twenty five. Um, one thing we're really excited about are facility maintenance upgrades. Um, we are upgrading our electric service dispatch center, our ESD center. And, um, we're going to do a total gut of it, rebuild, uh, just everything that, um, it's just not user friendly. We're going to make it a little bit um, more for work friendly for mainly storms and, and just day to day work. Our meter replacement program, uh, is just, uh, our meters are out of a warranty, we're placing about seven thousand a year. And then our radio, uh, upgrades are obsolete and we're going to start looking to replace BPU radio.
On the meter replacements, is that just going to be the ongoing now roughly?
That's it.
About seven thousand a year.
Yeah, they got a ten year warranty and once we get to that, ten, eleven, twelve years, that's.
Where they start failing.
All right, next slide. Um, that was a major project that we have. So we got cash, we got a little over fifteen million dollars. Future bond, a little over seven million dollars and the EDA grant is two million dollars and that's going to be, uh, identified for our hundred and eighteen street project.
That brings up me. So the stuff where I'm going to be speaking about down at near man, a lot of it pertains to the AQC stuff. I, I think most of everyone was here when we put AQC stuff in. Some of the, uh, some of the stuff down there has just reached its lifespan. I'll talk about that when I get down to it. Um, the first one on there, the CDS, uh, vessel reactors. Inside these reactors, we're seeing a lot of excessive wear in the cones of the, of the actual reactors. Uh, that money there is to actually perform a study and have the Riley Babcock come in and give us an idea on what it's going to take to replace the bottom halves of these cones. Um, it's something that is not in dire straits of right now, but it needs to be addressed. We want to get ahead of it and not have, you know, any further problems with that. Uh, they don't see any other issues with the reactor. It's just in this areas of where that, that they didn't foresee. So hopefully it won't be quite that much, but that is what we're budgeting for that.
And how old is that?
Sixteen when we went in. So that was kind of an unexpected.
Yeah, well, I'm just wondering if it's a pattern and, but, you know, just a budget for it in the future, knowing that it's maybe recurring every.
Hopefully this is a permanent fix. We hope, we hope. That is our goal. Uh, the next item, the steam drum instrument upgrades. Uh, it's our steam drum, we upgraded those, uh, level instrumentation and the pressure instrumentation in oh six when we put the DCS in. So they've reached the end of their, their, their life. Um, we're kind of doing that in, some of these items you'll see, we're kind of doing that in conjunction with some insurance requirements. Insurance had made some recommendations on how they would like to see these instruments placed. Uh, that will help also go back into the DCS and have, uh, the operators to be able to see information more readily without having to send an operator up to take a look at stuff. Uh, the cooling tower acid pumps, as you know, we've switched over to the cooling tower. We didn't use it for multiples of years. And now that we're using it, we're seeing some, some items that could have been improved on. The acid pumps are currently located on top of the tanks and if they lose their prime, we have to send someone up there and not, I'm going to use a bucket, but it's not a bucket. We have to pull a vessel up and of acid and send down there and get these pumps, try to get them primed. So it puts some of our personnel in precarious places. We're going to relocate those down to the bottom. Let's put a series of isolation valves and, and a redundant pump so we don't have to worry with that anymore. Um, the ID fan chiller compressors, they've kind of been an ongoing issue since we put the AQC in. We've spent a lot of money in the process of just, after they, the warranty went out. Uh, we've spent a lot of money just doing basic repairs on them. We, we've made the decision to try a different style of, uh, chiller compressors. We're going to try and do that in one full compressor set and each compressor chiller has four compressors in it. So we're going to go into that and make sure that the new compressors perform better. And if they do, we'll continue on with the second set of compressors. Um, the ball shaft fabric filters there, believe it or not, there's four thousand of those on each side. This money here is to just replace those. They've reached the end of their, uh, their, their, their lifespan. We're not seeing any leaks that are causing us any issues in it, but are afraid, we're afraid that if we start seeing leaks, they might all of a sudden start leaking at the same time. So we're going to go ahead and try to get you know, proactive on that. And that is money is just to purchase, uh, purchase the bags and the cages and next after twenty twenty five, we will put them all in, we'll budget that again. Number five, heat feed water replacement. Uh, the money was budgeted last year to purchase the feed water heater. This money is to remove the old one, make new connections and install new, uh, new instrumentation on it as well. Would be nice to get that back in service, uh, especially for our results engineer. We've had that out of service for quite a while now. So it does, it does affect our heat rate as it comes out a little bit. We're, we're happy to get that back in service. The AQ site, uh, air slide blowers, these blowers run twenty four seven. They, they provide air into the bottom of a process, the air slides process. And they've just reached their hours on runtime. We, we've, uh, we maintained them the best we can, but it's time to start replacing those. And we're going to try a different style of blowers uh, that are hopefully more economical than the ones that were, uh, that were supplied in the initial project. And I, I really hope to get a little bit better life out of them, but they are, they do run twenty four sets. Uh, the second later catalyst layers, if you were here last year, we finished that project up for the first layer this spring. This six hundred thousand is to purchase the second layer for both sides. And that's just to purchase materials and then there's money budgeted in for, for the twenty twenty five to put it in. I think that's another six hundred that we were probably going to ask for in twenty twenty five.
Anybody who didn't have any questions? Yes, it's time. Uh, welcome back to the CT four. Uh, and what are they doing that? If anybody has any other questions on this stuff, we can. I know that CT four one's going to be a little familiar to you because we have put some money in it recently as well.
So we did put, we did put money into CT four. I'm sorry. We did, we did put money into CP four for controls for this year. We didn't need that money. We saw an expense coming up for, um, primary and secondary fuel nozzles. We thought our money would be better. So we didn't spend that money last year. We're asking that this year for six hundred this year and then six hundred in twenty twenty five to purchase a replacement set of fuel nozzles to make CP four more reliable. It's, we, the work that we've done to it so far has been working out really good. CT four's been called on multiple times and it seems to be stepping up to the table. So we think at this time, it's a, it's a good time to go ahead and plan for another set of fuel nozzles. And the CT four lube oil skid, um, that's just minor to keep the oil clean. And then the other big is the next slide's, uh, CP. Yeah, fourteen, CP two and CP three. Um, the controls for both those units are the AVV controls that were installed in nineteen ninety nine in old plant two in the, in the comparative unit. And when we shut down Quandero, we took the best parts we threw out of near man and moved it over and basically put the, that old control system in to run CP two and CP three. What we'd really like to do, you know, those units have been called on a lot too. And, and Andrew Ferris is saying they're going to be worth more you know, those units have been called on a lot too. And Andrew Ferris is saying they're going to be worth more to us as a capacity factor in the future. We'd really like to upgrade those to our ovation controls. Right now they're remotely dispatched from Nierman. We start and stop them. We monitor them, but we still, it's still, you know, touch and go. Parts are hard to find. And with that, we'd really like to get those, this is once again, 750 budgeted for this year and then 750 in 2025 to get that done.
I'd, I'd like to hear for the budget meeting, what the return on investments are going to be on the.
PT two and three.
And for the nozzles. Yeah, just, I know that they're older and they do get called on, but I don't know how many, how many dollars of revenue really come from them because they're going to be higher up on that.
Seems like CP four is called on all the.
I know, but if the cost is already, if, if what you're being paid, you're not making any money off. And you're investing 600.
We're already helping make nuts on that.
So I think, I think between Darren and Andrew, we can get you.
Yeah, that's, yeah, yeah, you can just have it for the budget meeting. I just want to, I just want to discuss it during that Monday.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry, I talked too much.
No, it was, it was education.
Doug's done a fantastic job in, in the time that, bless his God, he's really stepped up and I know I really appreciate it. We've had Jaren try to pitch him, got out where he can too. So I mean, the two of them, they've done a fantastic job.
Thank you. There's water.
All right. And so I'll know quickly and then anything you guys want to cover going through our session for all day, I can surely tell this because we're going to be probably focused on this. So for all the work equipment, uh, we got 953,000, uh, budgeted. Um, we're going to replace about 10 pieces of equipment. Um, this is end life equipment that we've actually been pushing, pushing several years because we didn't have the cash for the place. The other big deal is, um, a meter test station at distribution must be for meters. Uh, this current one was purchased back in the late sixties. And, uh, with the new ones be more efficient, so easier on running one. Next likely. Uh, some of the major jobs here is a $2 million reservoir or a $7 million reservoir. We got $2 million there to finish it up. It was supposed to be finished in here, um, but Kansas City was a part of a motion of the concrete changing across the country. It hit us in Kansas City, we're at the middle of this project, uh, we couldn't pour the roof, uh, go up in a different type of, and it took them roughly about two and a half months to meet the specification requirement. So it's delayed it, it won't be completed till around the May time. About $2 million to finish it.
Finished when Steve?
It may somewhere near. And that's honestly, most of it will be done on the seventh. It's just the upgrades that we're doing to the four that's, we're doing some upgrades to it, pardon me. Uh, the, uh, 1.5 million, it's parallel station, we're replacing the switchgear there. Um, that's KKT money. Um, that switchgear is original, late sixties. Uh, so it's time to get that updated and bring it up to specs for that parallel formation. And then, um, the other big one there is 435. We're going to paint that like we did the Oakley Tower. We're going to paint that. We've pushed this a couple of years, waiting for more cash. We'll finally have that. So we're doing this project. I think this is going to be formed, it's seen by everybody out there. So we'll be doing that in September. And then also the big project is the 12th street, uh, with Kansas River Crossing. This has been quite a project because, um, we're dealt with KKT on this because it, where we're at is a super site, you know, and a lot of work we do is in the super sites that we have to deal with. We jump through a lot of hoops. It takes a lot longer to get a project done and this is one of them. Um, so let us go ahead and, and then the transmission um, we have our back plan that can be done after the first year. And that's going to give you a better idea of where we should put this transmission at and just start it on. And then these are annual projects that we do. It's a big one for the UG, uh, project there is the Hudson Road and Leamworth Road. Uh, they're fully redoing that intersection. They're cutting the hill. So we have to totally redo our main. Um, the other part of that, which the last, uh, board meeting, uh, Chris and the people want to do an update on the main replacement that five, we're going to spend $5 million of that 10 million we got. We're roughly replaced six miles up higher. And then the other part of our valves improvements, height improvements. And like I said, there's a master plan to finish it up. Next slide please. So this, this one is just kind of the same kind of thing, annual stuff that we do. Uh, it, it is, uh, technology or meters that we do that we have to replace. And, uh, and some facility improvements, we need to replace, uh, get the elevator fixed and engineering, it's not been working uh, for about a year now. We're going to get it fixed and there's water ground improvements. And then, uh, and then there's some big ones, uh, for the, um, down at the treatment plant, uh, VFD upgrades. And then all this, uh, the raw water pumps, we're, we're right now all, that has been pulled. It is, uh, the stock, one of our.
Please.
Yeah, all right.
Hey, uh. Let's, uh, yes. Let's send the work. I'm, as well, uh, we, uh, stand.
This is Jeff, I second.
Roll call please.
Roll call, Mylan.
Yeah.
Yeah. Mulvaney Henry.
Hi.
Bryant.
Hi.
Gonzalez.
Hi.
Broneman.
Hi.
Haley. That motion carries. This meeting is adjourned.